There's no City College Speakers Forum. The African American Artist is set to take the stage on Wednesday, February 28th at 6 o'clock. The event will be held at the Old Administration Building Auditorium as part of events commemorating Black History Month. And that's the latest. I'm Mike Moore from your 24 seven news source, The Black Information Network and B I N News dot com.
Joe Buck and John Smoltz welcoming you back to the city center convenience mart.
Uh oh.
She's looking at the cigarettes, but she just grabs the gum off the counter. Stand up to cancer and rally want you to reduce your risk for cancer. Go to take a healthy stand.
Is this the tag?
This is the KBLA Sports Minute with Ray Richardson.
Another rough day for both of LA's NBA teams. The Lakers lost by 10 in Phoenix. The Clippers lost by 16 at home to Sacramento. All five Lakers starters scored in double figures, but the Lakers got only 16 points off the bench. LeBron finished with 28 points and 12 assists. The Lakers are still three games behind Dallas for the eighth and final playoff spot in the Western Conference. The Lakers are back in action Wednesday night against the Clippers, who also need to regroup. Paul George did not play yesterday. He's got a sore left knee. Norman Powell started in George's absence. He led the Clippers with 21. Utah's women's basketball team snapped USC's seven game winning streak. Utah won by six at Galen Center. The Trojans dropped to 11 and five in the Pac 12. USC freshman Juju Watkins had a game high 30 points. The 12th time this season, the Compton native has had 30 or more. No debates, no speculation, just the info you need. That's your KBLA Sports Minute. I'm Ray Richardson on KBLA Talk 1580.
At KBLA Talk 1580, we believe that caring for the community means caring about the climate. You might have heard that we announced a pretty bold 12 month, $2 million campaign to do four things. Increase climate literacy, turn up the volume on communities of color in the climate conversation, connect everyday people with the resources they need to survive and thrive, and highlight frontline climate justice crusaders of color throughout this year. KBLA Talk 1580 will be bringing you insightful interviews on all of our shows to help raise your climate IQ. Each quarter this year, we will also be hosting free climate events in various communities throughout the city with food, fun, and forward thinking conversations. Thanks to partners like L A D W P, Metro, Caltrans, The Sierra Club, The California Community Foundation, The California Endowment, A Q M D, M W D, and more. You'll also be hearing more about a couple of national town halls broadcasting live from Los Angeles, to which you will be invited. And we'll be rolling out a robust social media campaign on all our platforms, as well as an outdoor media campaign, all designed to educate, enlighten, and empower you in our fight for climate justice.
We want cleaner air.
Caring about the community means caring about the climate. At KBLA Talk 1580, we believe that we really can change the world if we care enough.
KBLA Talk 1580. Time to meet another candidate for the Los Angeles Unified School District, District One. As I keep saying, because I know we are trying to get ready to do this thing. All of our election information is available at kbla1580.com. And you can listen to the podcast, anything you've missed. There's quite a few of them up there and there's more to come. Tomorrow, we will be hearing from candidates for District Eight and District 10. And we've got a lot. Now I'm not talking, now I'm not talking school board. I'm talking about the Los Angeles City Council. We have an interview coming up this week with Katie Porter, as we have already spoken with Adam Schiff and Deborah Lee, who are running for Senator. Haven't talked with Steve Garvey, although we have put the invitation out. Pivoting back though, to LA Unified School District, District One, the seat that has been occupied for quite a long time by the iconic George McKenna. The candidate who is joining us right now is a founder of something called One Entertainment. He was born and raised in LA. He says he's a product of the LA Unified School District. He graduated with honors. He played, he lettered in four sports and went to Sarito's College, Azusa Pacific University. He was a Regional Business Review Specialist, who went on to work in the LA USD. And he now joins us to tell us about himself and his candidacy, John Brassfield. Welcome.
Pleasure, pleasure. Thank you for the introduction. I appreciate you, Dominique.
Absolutely. Go ahead.
I'm just blessed to have the opportunity to just speak with you this morning and blessed to continue to develop and be a beacon to talk for the youth and to work with everybody that I worked with in the past and whoever I work with in the future. I look forward to it.
You're, you know, obviously you have a sports background, but you have also worked in education. Tell me about, you know, how that sports passion and experience comes to play as a school board member.
So by having a sports background, I feel like the sports basically connect. I feel like everything is a sport, right? So when you look at sports in life and you, and you can break everything down and you understand the dynamics of sports, it makes you a more rounded person because it teaches teamwork, it teaches coming together, it teaches a common goal, right? And the foundations and the principle of what is instilled, right? It's all on the coach. So if you have a coach that talks about the right principles, like one example I like to use is somebody, I went to USC, right? And I graduated with my master's recently, but John Wooden, right? I love John Wooden. He went to UCLA. So John Wooden has his pillars, right? And everybody has the pillars of the pyramid that you follow. But each coach has their own template, right? So multiple coaches have their own template and you have to follow that, right? In order to get alone, in order to achieve in life, in order to have great purposes. So I feel like a sports background is, is great because when you lose, you learn how to come back again and practice the next day. When you win, you learn how to come back again and practice the next day. And then you learn how to congratulate somebody, you know, how to show respect. It's a whole different kind of dynamic.
Understood. So you, I'm rushing you a little because I want to make sure you touch on your points here. You went to work for special education following your sort of work as a Regional Business Review Specialist for Restaurant dot com. What did, what were you doing with special education? You said that is your passion in some, in some measure along with sports.
So the reason why special, I even went into education is because I worked in the Special Olympics. And I was going through a time, sometimes you play, sometimes you don't play sports. It goes through that. But what I learned from special education is, is that people just cared about competing. So when you're in that moment, you got to take the moment all in, right? So just competing becomes the thing, right? Some people don't, don't understand what they have until they don't have it no more. So the most fun you have is, okay, when you practice with your teammates. You had a game when everybody sees you as fun, but when you had your teammates with you, when your parents come to practice or when, those little small things. And they made me realize that, and we broke bread together and it was a whole different kind of feeling by seeing that. So when I was talking about sports is, is, because some people want to win at all costs, right? And some people just want to compete. And when you compete, the best always comes out. But when that, when it all costs mindset, it's not what sports is about. So that's what I was talking about. And then special education, I have 15 years with the district of special education. I worked as a baseline, I worked as a one on one. Baselines, basically I took care of the classroom. That was my assignment, then one on one, and then also on resource specialist. So basically I, I make sure kids that have a harder time on campus are, are being heard, are being connected, are being accepted. And I make sure everything is, is okay. And inclusion is basically, I'm beginning to fair shake and a fair place to say and talk to everybody.
What do you, what do you think is needed right now in the Los Angeles Unified School District? Your bio says you're very pro U T L A. What do you think is the top priority for our children at this point?
So the top priority for our students at this point is, is to, to change the way that we give the information. Because information is still pertinent, the same information. It's going to be more words we create, it's going to be more information, it's going to be more. But the information that we were giving is pertinent and it's amazing and it's fantastic. But the thing is, is how are we delivering it? So now how can we deliver the message for, for our new generation can understand it? Because the same things that worked 20 years ago or 30 years ago are not going to work in this time with technology changing, with the information coming so fast, right? We have this new chat G P, G P T, I believe, right? AI technology. Students will, will take advantage of that, right? But if they take advantage of it the wrong way, they're not going to learn anything, right? So my thing is, is that we have to be on top of what we're teaching and we have to make sure that everybody is getting the right information. But then also we have a career preparation, we have people work with their hands. Some people like working with their hands. Some people don't want to be on the screens. And then also over sensationalization, because when you're on a computer too long, you have to take time away from it, right? So my thing is, we have to make sure we're connecting and breaking everything down. So it's a lot, it's really important that we have more counselors in place. And this, and this is, and I can give you a bunch of things, but my main thing, I would say, what the district needs right now is infrastructure to take care of the technology that we're having and how we can get the information to parents and the students and to the other constituents in the city. And then also have the support with the counselors and the health professionals and also some community activists, community leaders, where they need to be engaged. And also neighborhood council is going to be a big part in the future. It's already a big part now, but a bigger part.
How do you feel about police on campus?
So police on campus for me is, 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 it's like, it's two sides, right? So I look at both sides. And I see the benefit of police on campus. I see the, the not so beneficial part. With things like when people get into it, you got big bodies, you don't know how to deal with those things. That's, that becomes the issue, right? So my, my thing is, is that I don't have no problem with police on campus because I grew up with police on campus myself, right? And I didn't have no problem with them, right? I talked to the officers, one of the officers looked out for me and so I grew up like that. But some of my friends don't have that same experience that I watched, right? That they came from a different kind of track, right? So, and they didn't talk to the officers like I talk to the officers all the time and said, what's up? And, and like, like, cause I really go and say, hey, what's up? How you doing now, sir? Or talk, and, and some people don't do that, they don't have that kind of relationship. So when people try to typecast or people feel fearful, because now you don't, you don't, we don't worry about that in elementary. We don't really worry about typically in middle school, you see it, but in high school, big bodies, people get kind of intimidated sometimes because they don't know how to engage with the students. I coached, so I never really had that issue in 27 years. Only seen three fights on campus, me personally and my, and I broke, and I broke one of them up and the other one really didn't, wasn't really a fight, but they pushing and shoving, they had to call it a fight, I guess. So only two times, two fights in 27 years with two punches thrown. I'm being real. And so what I'm saying is, I never had to use the police to break up a fight or, or tell them to calm down or even with parents, right? So my thing is, is that getting people to be self sufficient by using distributive leadership, right? And those principles are going to be taught by this, like having diffusing situations and deescalating situations. And a lot of people are not trained in that and every culture is different, right?
Right, but at some point you got to vote up or down. You know what I mean? Have them on campus or don't have them on campus.
Oh, yeah. So, so in middle school campuses right now, they have a, they have officer on campus. The middle schools, they have one officer that I'm aware of. And on high school campuses, they have multiple officers that rotate, right? And that right there for me is, it's okay. Cause for me, literally the, the high school that I worked at, which is Hamilton High School, I worked there a few years ago, the officer that works there, everybody liked him.
And what about the black student achievement plan? Where do you fall on that?
I follow it. I'm, I'm happy it's starting right now. I wish it would have started 20 years ago. But you know what I mean? So I'm like, I'm, 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 I'm at with it. I'm happy, I'm happy it started. It started four years ago and that's good and I'm excited for it, right?
Okay, I, I want to make sure I give you a chance here because we're, we're almost out of time. So John Brassfield, give me your one minute pitch. Why should we vote for you for LA USD District One?
You should vote for me because I'm going to get things done. I'm going to figure out a way regardless of anything. I don't really take no for an answer when it comes down to getting certain things. If somebody tells me, no, I figured out a way around it to get what I need to get done. The students are what, the only reason why I'm doing this anyway. This is, this position is a lot of stress. And if it wasn't for the student, I mean, like, like this is not like a, a thing for me to do something. It's just for me, because I want to stand up for my students. I want to make sure they're getting what they need. I know a bunch of information. The way I think is a little different dynamic and I've been to a lot of different experiences. I worked in a lot of different facets in life and I have a lot of different life experiences and a lot of different people. I'm unlike any other candidate the district has ever had, I believe, when I did my research. So that's it.
All right, well, thank you for joining us. It's John Aaron Brassfield for thecommunity.com, right? John Aaron Brassfield for thecommunity.com.
Mm hmm, that is correct.
All right, well, thank you for checking in with us. It's a pleasure to talk with you.
Thank you so much, Dominique.
We've got more candidates, more information. We are in fact your election information station, KBLA Talk 1580.
At KBLA Talk 1580, we do black history every single day. In fact, as the only black talk radio station west of the Mississippi, we are black history. Our annual Black History Month luncheon is fast approaching and we want to be sure to give you ample time to get your company, organization, church, or group to join us at this year's celebration on the last day of the month, Thursday, February 29th at noon. Last year, we honored iconic local black media personalities, including Pat Harvey, Jim Hill, Mark Brown, Beverly White, Sandy Banks, and Pat Prescott, and raised $20,000 in scholarships. This year, we're honoring black Hollywood creatives who have used their artistic genius as climate justice champions. At this year's luncheon, we will be showcasing and sharing their inspiring work on our big screen. Plus, a scrumptious meal, live music, great company, and lots of fun with your favorite KBLA Talk 1580 hosts. So contact us today at info@smileyaudiomedia.com or call 323-290-4690. That's info@smileyaudiomedia.com or call 323-290-4690. We hope to see you Thursday, February 29th, as we close out Black History Month. At KBLA Talk 1580, we've got your black.
Hey Californians, are you ready to make your homeownership dreams come true? The California Dream for All Shared Appreciation Loan Program might be for you. First generation home buyers can get down payment and closing cost assistance along with a first mortgage to help you unlock the door of your new home. Applications open in April, so talk to an approved lender to see if you're eligible. Find out more at calhfa.ca.gov/dream or call 877-922-5432. A message from the California Housing Finance Agency.
It's game day at Jim's house and the spread is impressive.
Mike's already done some damage with the hot wings and now he's dropping back and going deep for another slice of pizza.
I sure hope he brought the Pepto.
Mike knows that Pepto Bismol provides fast, five symptom relief from unexpected stomach upsets. He's no rookie.
The way he's throwing back those nachos, he's the goat.
Be ready for game day with Pepto Bismol.
Use as directed, keep out of reach of children.
We're with Bridget, whose husband won't be home for months and whose daughter is due any day. We're with Mike, who's leaving home to protect his family and yours. We're with all service members and their families who need community, connection, and maybe a bit of magic. Are you with them? Learn more at USO.org today.
Thanks for waking up with Dominique De Prima on KBLA Talk 1580.
And do appreciate you. It's a good time to call. We got a few minutes before our next school board candidate, 800 920 1580. 800 920 1580. This school district race that we're talking about is District One. Also, if you happen to be a candidate for office, this is the perfect time to call. We'll give you three minutes, even if it's a race that we are not covering. Just call 800 920 1580, 800 920 1580. So Trump won the Republican primary in South Carolina yesterday. Maybe not a huge surprise, even though that is the home state of Nikki Haley. In fact, she used to be the governor of that state. And she has said she's going to stay in the race till the wheels fall off. I'm confused why the Biden camp doesn't want her there. They, it seems like the Biden camp would rather move on to going against, directly against Trump and not having anyone else on the periphery. To me, I like having Nikki Haley there, not because I'm a fan of her politics. She is clearly a Confederate, but because she's throwing lobs at Donald Trump. She is firebombing him from his own camp, right? Talking about his age, his fitness for office, criticizing his stance on NATO and the Ukraine. So I think it's a good thing to have someone bothering him, especially someone who used, who was appointed by him to be an ambassador to the UN. And so I'm not in any hurry, but I don't know if she's going to be able to stay in this race because the money is starting to leave now that she lost her home state. The Koch Network, Koch Brothers, of course, that's a huge billionaire funding source, which has kept her quite viable, even though she hasn't been able to overcome Trump. Americans for Prosperity Action is what it's called. They've spent tens of millions of dollars elevating Nikki Haley. And really what they're trying to do is stop Trump from getting nominated again. However, it seems that they are kind of acknowledging that it's not working. And at this point, they are ready to throw in the towel. In fact, they are throwing in the towel because they say they need to focus on the Americans, they need, Americans for Prosperity is saying they want to focus on the Senate and they want to focus on the House of Representatives. Makes sense. They want to keep control of those party, those bodies. It's not great for us because if Republicans end up controlling the Senate, the House, and they put, and y'all, because you know, I ain't voting for him, put DJT in office, it's a wrap. Okay, we have a candidate calling in. That's great because we're calling all candidates, giving you a free airtime, three minutes to tell us about yourself. And one such candidate is joining us. She is seeking to represent Assembly District 52, Socia Quinones. Welcome.
Well, good morning, Dominique. I appreciate you allowing me to speak and introduce myself to your listeners. I am a longtime Chicana activist. I'm a movement baby. My dad was friends with Ruben Salazar, who was assassinated August 29th, 1970, in one of the largest anti-Vietnam mobilizations in Los Angeles. And so as a baby, you know, I, my, my sister took me to my first protest. It was boycotting Safeway against grapes, lettuce, and Coors. And, you know, I'm running in a very difficult race because the powers that be have picked their chosen one, but I'm also fighting the Latino male machine. So District 52 covers CD one and CD 14. And those gentlemen that were representing those councils were caught on those leak tapes. And I denounced them as a member of the Chicana caucus when they tried to speak at our caucus. I vehemently said, no way. You haven't even talked to the people in LA. And some of those gentlemen got their money and put a probation officer to run against me. And his name is Carlos Leon. And so to me, I've always supported black and brown unity. And it is a very contested race because we are the majority in this district and the party has put their money behind another candidate. And she's not of our ethnic group, which also causes racial tensions, right? And it's okay, everybody can run. But she's, and that's Jessica Caldosa, who's backed by special interests. I'm a grassroots candidate. I've been organizing my whole life and people go, can go to my webpage, it's sofiaforassembly.com to fight, you can see all the struggles I fought for. And one right now, I think that's very important is excite. And we haven't heard a lot from the black community. There was a recycling, battery recycling plant in Vernon. But when the wind blows, it blows in both directions from the Santa Ana winds. And a lot of the children and the families that have been affected by this contamination, you know, are very sick. And the DTSE for years has lied to us and said, well, simple blood tests. Well, well, we'll, we'll be able to check the blood and we'll see if you've been exposed, you know, to lead. Well, I worked with Dr. Brock Bauer and I reached out to the doctors that dealt with the 9/11 implosion. And they told us it was a lie, that the blood is not detected after, the lead is not detected in the blood after 30 days. And we are demanding body scanning machines because this is what doctors told us, the experts. And they, and they, the head of the DTSE just a few months ago told me, we're not going to buy your body scanning machines. So how can they diagnose us, you know, where, where it's contaminated? This is worse than Flint, Michigan. It was a seven million pound bomb. And these are the issues I'm bringing forward. So people can find out more at sofiaforassembly.com. And I really hope the black community can get involved with excite because our people are dying and it's a form of genocide.
Yeah, that's what I was going to tell you. You've got 30 seconds here. Your contacts or endorsements or anything that you want to add on here?
I was endorsed by the late family of Gloria Molina, Vicky Castro, also a civil rights pioneer in the East LA Walkouts. California Care for All has also endorsed me. And then the families of La Loma Bishop and Paloveze, which is Chavez Ravine, the East LA Boyle Heights Coalition, First Blocks of Woody Year Boulevard, and a lot of community grassroots leaders.
Okay.
And, you know, so thank you, Dominique, and thank you to your listeners.
S O F I A F O R assembly.com?
Sofiaforassembly.com.
Okay, thank you so much for calling in. Appreciate you.
Appreciate you too, sister. Bye bye.
Bye. We've got Randy calling us from Watts. Randy, you got about a minute and a half here before news, traffic, and sports. Use it wisely.
Yes, good morning, you guys. Very interesting meeting this weekend by Holly Mitchell's office at the, at Magic Johnson Park. It was a workshop for the solution of street takeovers. And there were over 200 participants there from the community. I was very impressed. And she's asking if anybody has any ideas? And it was really devastating to see how this has affected our community in reference.
I wasn't, I wasn't aware of that. Did you weigh in?
Oh yeah, we, we weighed in with our solution, but our solution, which, which we've already done 11 times, has to be really put in concrete with, with the city. And so we'll see what happens with additional, additional meetings. But we have to do something for this because it's not, it's slowing down. And a lot of harsh, harsh sentences are being laid down on these young people. And if they just had a facility to do it with, they wouldn't happen. We were talking about some, some, some 15 year sentences. Cars are being destroyed. Cars are being repossessed by the manufacturers and these, and these young people are being cited with a credit violations. Also, and not to mention lives being lost. So if anybody out there in my, in the sound of my voice has got any ideas or if you want to come to some more of these town hall meetings, get a hold of Holly Mitchell's office.
Okay. Thank you, Randy. Yeah, I mean, it's great that she is convening around this. I wasn't aware and we know she's running for reelection and I know I'll be voting for her. KBLA Talk 1580.
She's reclaiming her time on KBLA Talk 1580. More of First Things First with Dominique De Prima when we come forward.
I'm Mike Moore. Here's the latest from the Black Information Network. President Biden will be in New York City today for campaign events. Barricades are up along streets with gridlock expected in midtown and on Manhattan's east side as the commander in chief makes his way through Manhattan. Meantime, former President Donald Trump is the winner of South Carolina's GOP presidential primary. He came out on top over the weekend after already winning in Iowa, New He came out on top over the weekend after already winning in Iowa, New Hampshire, Nevada, and the U.S. Virgin Islands. A former NFL offensive coordinator is heading back to the college level. ESPN reporting that former Washington commanders and Kansas City Chiefs offensive coordinator Eric Biennium is set to become UCLA's new associate head coach and O.C. The African American coach is finalizing a two-year deal to return to the program where he once worked as a Bruins assistant. And that's the latest. I'm Mike Moore from your twenty-four seven news source, the Black Information Network and B.I.N. News dot com.
Joe Buck and John Smoltz welcoming you back to the city center convenience mart.
Uh-oh.
She's looking at the cigarettes, but she just grabs the gum off the counter. Stand up to cancer and rally, want you to reduce your risk for cancer. Go to takeaheltystand.
Is this the tag?
This is the KBLA Sports Minute with Ray Richardson.
Another rough day for both of L.A.'s NBA teams. The Lakers lost by ten in Phoenix. The Clippers lost by sixteen at home to Sacramento. All five Lakers starters scored in double figures, but the Lakers got only sixteen points off the bench. LeBron finished with twenty-eight points and twelve assists. The Lakers are still three games behind Dallas for the eighth and final playoff spot in the Western Conference. The Lakers are back in action Wednesday night against the Clippers, who also need to regroup. Paul George did not play yesterday. He's got a sore left knee. Norman Powell started in George's absence. He led the Clippers with twenty-one. Utah's women's basketball team snapped USC's seven-game winning streak. Utah won by six at Galen Center. The Trojans dropped to eleven and five in the Pac-12. USC freshman Juju Watkins had a game-high thirty points. The twelfth time this season, the Compton native has had thirty or more. No debates, no speculation, just the info you need. That's your KBLA Sports Minute. I'm Ray Richardson on KBLA Talk fifteen eighty.
City of Los Angeles tenants, get informed today about your eviction rights. Take immediate action if you receive an eviction notice from the court. You have five days to respond to an eviction notice or unlawful detainer. Don't self evict. And you can't be evicted for non-payment of rent unless you owe more than the fair market rent for a unit your size. Learn more eviction information, such as at fault and no fault evictions, at housing.lacity.org. Be informed, be protected, be at home.
It's never been faster or easier to be a voter. Look for your vote by mail ballot in the mail. Fill it in and drop it off at a mailbox on your way to work, on your daily walk, or when dropping the kids off at school. Save time and vote early. Make a plan to vote at plan.lavote.gov. That's plan.lavote.gov. Brought to you by the Los Angeles County Register.
KBLA Talk fifteen eighty is the exclusive media sponsor of This Light of Ours, activist photographers of the civil rights movement. A dynamic new exhibition on view now at the Skirball Cultural Center in Los Angeles. This Light of Ours showcases more than one hundred fifty photos taken by movement insiders from diverse backgrounds that reveal the vital work undertaken by a broad coalition of organizers and everyday people whose collective action changed America. This Light of Ours is one of three temporary exhibitions currently on view at the Skirball, which together explore issues related to civil rights, immigration, and pluralism. Tickets and more information for all three exhibitions are available at skirball.org. That's skirball.org, S-K-I-R-B-A-L-L dot org.
Broadcasting live from Lower Park, USA. Welcome back to your home for Unapologetically Progressive Radio, KBLA Talk fifteen eighty.
And we appreciate you being here with us. I love, love, love the fact that so many of our KBLA delegation is actually listening to the podcast. I see it, I see it on YouTube. All of these conversations are available for you for free. All of the election information, boom, it's right there at kbla1580.com. You can also get, you can follow along, read for yourself, come to your own conclusions, and then call me. Because KBLA Talk fifteen eighty has released groundbreaking climate justice information. It is from a survey we did about environmental issues. And it is, it was unveiled this morning on this show. Of course, we'll be talking more about it on all of our other shows, but you could see for yourself at kbla1580.com. It looks at the impacts of pollution and climate change on our community, right? So this poll brings unique insights into black voter sentiments and preferences on key environmental and social justice issues. There are some surprising findings, some encouraging ones, and some that are not at all surprising if you are someone that's been talking about this issue over the years as I have. And one of the things that we really want to highlight is that there is a connection, a direct connection between environmental justice, social justice, and civil rights. That's according to likely voters, black voters in L.A. County. Also, they believe, the respondents believe overwhelmingly that pollution, climate change, and other forms of environmental harm impact black, Latino, and low-income communities more than white, Asian, wealthy, and coastal communities. That is, you know, was right on point with what Sofia Quinones was talking about with the excite battery plant and how these type of superfund sites, toxic sites, and dirty polluting businesses tend to be clustered in our communities. If you want to learn more, just go to kbla1580.com. Of course, this is part of our historic year-long climate justice campaign. We care, we really do at KBLA. It's not just about slogans, it's about our unapologetically progressive stance. We are KBLA Talk fifteen eighty. So check that out. But pivoting back to L.A. USD District One, we have another candidate for the seat that was occupied for a long time by George McKenna. And these are big shoes to fill. Our next, you know, aspiring school board member was born and raised in south central Los Angeles in a big working class family. He says he grew up in a family of six, but the number of people in his household changed because they were taking in, his parents were taking in family, friends, and neighborhood children, even though they were not wealthy, just to help folks out. Is a product of L.A. USD District One Schools, Christian Flag, welcome.
Hey, good morning. Thank you for having me.
Yeah, thanks for stopping in. So tell me about your background in District One, why, you know, why you know it so well and where you went in the district, what that means to you, why you're stepping up to, in a quest to be on the school board.
Oh, absolutely. So, yeah, I went to Normandy Avenue School. I went to Audubon Middle School, shout out to the Eagles, and I went to Crenshaw. So, you know, class of oh seven, shout out to all my Cougars out there. Yeah, for me, you know, being in this, born and raised in this neighborhood, I had the privilege of being raised by, I like to say, you know, older parents that they come out of the tail end of the civil rights movement, the black power movement, born in the fifties. So I have this deep connection to like multiple generations in Los Angeles, black Los Angeles. And, yeah, they raised me with a really strong cultural, political, and cultural consciousness, right, that just really established this deep commitment to community, but also education and understanding the critical need of education to really empower people to do for self, right, to be self-determined and to be self-sustaining. So, yeah.
You, you've never worked in the school board, you've never worked in elected office, right?
No, not at all.
So, so why should we trust you for this position?
I've been working in education for over twelve years and that has all been centered in community centers, community organizations, where we've done the work of really supplementing the academics that's done in schools. So I've done the academic counseling, youth leadership development programs, all the way up to now a director of youth programs where I'm, you know, creating curriculums, leading teams of folks who support. But a big piece of that has been the policy advocacy through community organizing. So for the last four years, actually, I've been at the center of a community campaign that has brought Black Student Achievement Plan to L.A. USD. So that's now over a hundred and twenty-five million dollar of annual investments committed to resources that were named by the people. That's academic resources, social emotional resources, and even ones to develop the positive cultural identity in our young black students in L.A. USD. And it really came at, as a result of just longstanding disparities around academics, the behavioral issues, the disciplinary actions taken against black students with no clear and explicit commitment from the district to address those unique needs.
When you say director of youth programs, for what organization?
So this is at Community Coalition. So my formal title is Director of Training at Community Coalition. But I've done this most closely with our youth leadership program called Say Yeah, so South Central Youth Empowered Through Action, where we're actually teaching young people how to organize, how to engage civically, and how to actually transform policy, right? Don't just, you know, exist in your community and complain about it. No, understand the inner workings of how things are changed, understand the historic social and economic conditions that contributed to the current state, and learn how to actually go advocate. So when I say this community campaign, it was actually students, parents, educators that were going to the board, you know, negotiating with the past superintendent, Austin Butner, when it first was initiated. And since then, we have consistently and regularly been in close contact, direct communication, overseeing the implementation of the program, which really informs why I'm like chose to actually go into trying to become the board member.
Where are you on this controversy around the charter school policy of the L.A. USD where they're actually moving some charter schools off of the traditional public school campuses?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, so to me, it's this long debate, right? For me, we have to be importantly focused on what is the purpose of charter schools? Historically, it came in to help be incubators for innovation, right? It was supposed to be spaces where you can kind of pilot innovative curriculum and programs, and then that be adapted by the district. The issue is that we've gotten to a point where charter schools are starting to kind of go away from that and become a drain on the public education system. So for me, it's about restoring that, kind of harmony of saying, okay, where can we have spaces to build out, you know, new ways to support our young people, but at the same time not have it in a way that it compromises the district? So I think this recent co-location initiative or reworking is, was an important step to trying to reestablish that balance. The big gap for me, though, was explicit and kind of mandate around the community engagement. We have to facilitate conversations between the young people, the parents at the public schools, traditional public schools, while also facilitating this conversation with the folks at our charter schools, right, recognizing that everyone needs a quality education. There's reason, right? You understand why parents are choosing charter schools, but at the same time, we have to ensure that we're giving them confidence that our public education system is actually something that they can choose and find a top-tier educational experience.
One of the things, you know, you touted your involvement in organizing to push through the Black Student Achievement Program. And one of the things that become, is often an issue, at least for our listeners, is how are, you know, how are we now in majority, many of our campuses are majority Latino, how do we serve, you know, and Community Coalition is of course famous for that? How do we serve Latino students without de-prioritizing or defunding black students?
Mm-hmm. Well, so with that one, there's another effort, and this is a more broader district-wide effort, is around equitable spending and equitable allocation of resources. So we know that we have his communities that have been historically disinvested, predominantly black neighborhoods, but also black and brown. So we have what's called the Student Equity Needs Index that has used this kind of formula of not only academic student outcomes, right, the economic status of students, but also community indicators like police violence, like asthma rates, to identify communities that have the highest need. We say, we know these areas need extra resources, extra supports, and that's irregardless of race, right? That is where we're seeing a lot more dollars in funding, prioritizing our Latino students. And then we have the efforts around like the English language learner initiatives where we know there needs to be a lot more reworking of those programs which have been established right now ten, fifteen years ago, but needs to be revamped. And that kind of goes into one of my general things is bringing more innovation and transformation. What I've learned in this past four years, the district is pretty rigid in the way that it attempts to do things, right? Even when it's starting to adopt these new progressive and kind of forward-thinking initiatives, right, they accepted the DSAP as the community defined it, but when it comes to the actual processes and protocols to implement these things.
And funding, yeah.
And, right, it's oftentimes kind of, that's not the way the district does things, right? That's not how we do it, that's not our policy. Well, if we look at the data, is it longstanding? If we're not changing, if we're not actually changing not only what we want to do, but how we're doing it, you're often going to get the same results.
Okay, we just got a minute here. Tell us, you know, give us your pitch and tell us how to find you.
So you can find me at flagwiththepeople.com. That's my last name, F.L.A.G.G., withthepeople.com. We need somebody that's going to come in and actually transform things, who's going to be a champion for our black students, who's going to be a champion for our highest need students. And this period coming up, we have budget deficits, you know, we have different things going on. If we don't have somebody who's going to stand up and be explicit about the way we need to support and target our black students and students with the highest needs, we're going to be in for some really challenging times in the coming period, so.
And your website, you said, flagwiththepeople.com. For those that live around here, you've seen his signs, he's got the long locks and they're all over South L.A. Thank you for checking in with us this morning, Christian Flag. Nice to talk to you.
All right, thank you. Bye-bye.
All right, it's the perfect time to call me. If you liked what you heard, you didn't like what you hear, you got something else going on, give me a call, eight hundred nine two oh fifteen eighty. We are KBLA Talk fifteen eighty.
More of First Things First with Dominique De Prima when we come forward.
Do you support public education? More than thirty-eight thousand educators at United Teachers Los Angeles do too. Together, we have fought for a better public education for our students and communities. And having you on our side has been essential in our fight for better public schools. Together, we will continue to work for public schools with green spaces, more mental health staff, smaller class sizes at every grade level, and a higher investment in the Black Student Achievement Plan. We are UT LA, and you make us stronger.
Los Angeles County needs a new district attorney.
I'm Jeff Timorinsky and I'm running for district attorney. I have served as chief of the violent and organized crime section of the Los Angeles United States Attorney's Office. I've never lost a case. I have experience managing large teams of lawyers and staff, and I've done it in the largest federal judicial district in the nation. I've been endorsed by civil rights attorney Connie Rice, by former L.A. County supervisor Yvonne Braithwaite Burke, and by the New Frontier Democratic Club, the oldest and largest African-American Democratic Club in California. I'm a lifelong Democrat. As your next district attorney, I'll do everything I can to make our community safer and reform our justice system for every community in Los Angeles.
Jeff Timorinsky, Democrat for District Attorney, endorsed by the leaders we trust. Our community can trust Jeff Timorinsky to stand up for us. Vote by March fifth. Paid for by Jeff Timorinsky for District Attorney 2024.
Are you ready to ignite your potential? Special Needs Network presents the C.O.R.E. Workforce Development Grant, an opportunity designed just for you. You've been there for everyone else. Now it's time to be there for yourself. Whether you're a college student or a working professional, the core program is here to empower you on your journey. Get paid with free specialized diversity training, mentorship, and stipend to fuel your passion, power, and purpose in the behavioral health sciences. It's time to focus on your dreams while making a difference in your community. Don't wait. Visit a difference in your community. Don't wait. Visit SNLA.org coreprogram to apply today. Be the spark that ignites connections. Your future is waiting. Again, that's SNLA.org coreprogram.
This is KBLA Talk fifteen eighty, where hate meets a scholarly match.
Man, and the LA School Board race for District One has been thrown, you know, into a little bit of disarray by, well, I shouldn't say a little, probably a lot of disarray by the controversy around Khalid Al Alim, who is the candidate, a black man, running for the same district we've been talking about, District One, which was, you know, shepherded by George McKenna for all these years. He was the candidate that was endorsed by the Los Angeles Teachers Union, UTLA. They had spent more than six hundred and fifty grand on an independent campaign supporting him. They had been organizing and door-knocking on his behalf. I know I've gotten a lot, a lot of flyers for this guy. Well, UTLA has suspended their work on behalf of Al Alim, and they are going to vote this week on whether or not they will actually rescind the endorsement. There's a whole series of steps that have to be taken for that to officially happen. And it's because of social media posts. Reportedly, this candidate, Mr. Al Alim, liked some stuff that was considered anti-Semitic. It also has liked stuff around guns and pornography online. He has apologized, right, for those posts, those likes. He has, he has actually admitted to most of this stuff, and he has expressed regret, saying that he spent his life fighting antisemitism, anti-Arab hate, Islamophobia, all types of oppression. He spent his life fighting for equality of all people. And he says, I apologize for my likes on social media of graphic content. It was inappropriate, and I will never do that again. Now, whether or not someone, a black man in particular, and especially in the context of schools, can bounce back from that, I do not know. I was speaking with some of his supporters yesterday, who say they're going to fight on. But certainly, this throws the race wide open. You've heard from some other folks that are running, and we will continue. There's a few more for District One, including Sherla Henni Nubel, who has been endorsed by the Los Angeles Times, another black woman. Part of what makes this race a little more challenging to sort out is that everybody's black. Almost everybody running for the seat is black. And so now you really have to get, do our due diligence about what they stand for and what distinguishes one from another. And that's what I'm trying to help us do by, uh, having, not everybody, one, we have one candidate who's not black. And that's Rena Tambor. I'm not sure if we have her schedule, but we will be talking to all of those that make themselves available, because this will be one that is important and one that is going to take some discernment. It's not too late to call me, believe it or not, eight hundred nine two oh fifteen eighty. I'm Dominique DePrima for KBLA Talk fifteen eighty.
The station you turn to when you've had it up to gear with cultural incompetence. KBLA Talk fifteen eighty.
Abstinence use disorder and addiction is so isolating. And so, as a black woman in recovery, hope must be loud. It grows louder when you ask for help and you're vulnerable. It is the thread that lets you know that no matter what happens, you will be okay.
When we learn the power of hope, recovery is possible. Find out how at startwithhope.com. Brought to you by the National Council for Mental Wellbeing, Shatterproof, and the Ad Council.
KBLA Talk fifteen eighty. We've got a lot to talk about.
KBLA reminds you that when we fight, we win, and we don't black down. LA Community Action Network, or LA CAN, was formed in nineteen ninety-nine, when twenty-five residents of downtown LA came together and acknowledged the problems that existed in their community, and made a commitment to do something about those problems, to stand together, organize, and become a force in the community that demands change. Civil rights and preventing the criminalization of poverty are their core projects. In addition, they take on women's rights, the human right to housing, and healthy food access. LA CAN also has projects focused on economic development, civic participation, voter engagement, and community media. While downtown LA remains their home base, with a particular emphasis on the Skid Row community, in two thousand and seven, they expanded their housing and healthy food access work into South Central Los Angeles. LA CAN believes that power for low-income people and people of color is achieved through a large, active, and well-informed member base that utilizes a multitude of methods to advance their messages and goals. If you'd like to join the Los Angeles Community Action Network and organize people to fight back against oppression, please visit cangress.org. That's cangress.org. This is a community call to action from KBLA Talk fifteen eighty.
Listen up, City of Los Angeles renters that live in rent-controlled units. Landlords can now increase your rent by four percent. Know these three facts. The rent increase is allowed February first, twenty twenty-four, through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. An extra one percent per utility, up to six percent, can be added if the landlord pays the entire gas and electric bill. And illegal rent increase complaints can be filed at housing.lacity.org. Check if you live in a rent-controlled unit and learn more at housing.lacity.org. Be informed, be protected, be at home.
The conversation continues right now with Dominique DePrima on First Things First.
Right now, and you know, as we see these battles playing out in school boards across the country, right, around things like, will we allow black studies? Here we are in Black History Month, ethnic studies, even in California, where we have embraced it, is a battlefield about what is in that curriculum. And so although it seems like school board is not maybe our top priority to think about, I am going to encourage us to pay attention, because this has become one of the main battlegrounds for anti-wokeness. And if you think it's not happening in the state of California, then you are not paying attention, because it absolutely is with book bannings, with fights over curriculum, LGBTQ+, especially rights for trans students and other vulnerable populations, the fight here in Los Angeles over the Black Student Achievement Program, which is a huge, it's a huge win that we have to protect. I think this is a time to pay attention. And District One is where a lot of the black and Latina students actually go to school. We also have a big fight taking place right now about charter schools, and how will we share or not share our resources with them, the new policy around that, the co-location of charter schools on regular public school campuses, and how that can disadvantage students in some vulnerable districts like District One. So we have got to pay attention, and we're trying to make it easier for you. All these conversations are on kbla1580.com. You can find them on YouTube, along with any of our other podcasts, and they are free, 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 free. Tavis Smiley is up next. I think you know that. He'll have a great Monday morning show for you. I'm off to Sacramento, where I'm receiving an award. It is called the Unsung Heroes Award. Reggie Jones Sawyer and the Assembly there presenting me that for Black History Month. So I'm honored to do that, and I will be right back to be on this mic with you tomorrow. My quote today comes from Maya Angelou. She says, wouldn't it be wonderful when black history and Native American history and Jewish history and all of US history is taught from one book, just US history? History is now, and we are making it together. I'm Dominique DePrima. Until tomorrow, one love.
KBLA fifteen eighty, Santa Monica.
I'm Mike Moore. Here's the latest from the Black Information Network. President Biden will be in New York City today for campaign events. Barricades are up along streets with gridlock expected in midtown and on Manhattan's east side as the commander in chief makes his way through Manhattan. Meantime, former President Donald Trump is the winner of South Carolina's GOP presidential primary. He came out on top over the weekend after already winning in Iowa, New Hampshire, Nevada, and the US Virgin Islands. A former NFL offensive coordinator is heading back to the college level. ESPN reporting that former Washington commanders and Kansas City Chiefs offensive coordinator Eric Biennium is set to become UCLA's new associate head coach and OC. The African-American coach is finalizing a two-year deal to return to the program where he once worked as a Bruins assistant. And that's the latest. I'm Mike Moore from your twenty-four-seven news source, the Black Information Network and B I N News dot com.
Joe Buck and John Smoltz welcoming you back to the city center convenience mart.
Uh-oh.
She's looking at the cigarettes, but she just grabs the gum off the counter. Stand Up to Cancer and Rally want you to reduce your risk for cancer. Go to takeahelthystand.
Is this the tiger?
This is the KBLA Sports Minute with Ray Richardson.
Another rough day for both of LA's NBA teams. The Lakers lost by ten in Phoenix. The Clippers lost by sixteen at home to Sacramento. All five Lakers starters scored in double figures, but the Lakers got only sixteen points off the bench. LeBron finished with twenty-eight points and twelve assists. The Lakers are still three games behind Dallas for the eighth and final playoff spot in the Western Conference. The Lakers are back in action Wednesday night against the Clippers, who also need to regroup. Paul George did not play yesterday. He's got a sore left knee. Norman Powell started in George's absence. He led the Clippers with twenty-one. Utah's women's basketball team snapped USC's seven-game winning streak. Utah won by six at Galen Center. The Trojans dropped to eleven and five in the Pac-12. USC freshman Juju Watkins had a game-high thirty points. The twelfth time this season, the Compton native has had thirty or more. No debates, no speculation, just the info you need. That's your KBLA Sports Minute. I'm Ray Richardson on KBLA Talk fifteen eighty.
I'm Dr. Nekordalai Cortez with the KBLA Talk fifteen eighty editorial. In a public opinion survey commissioned by KBLA Talk fifteen eighty and conducted by a Viterus, the black voters surveyed were highly enthusiastic about the March twenty twenty-four primary, the race for Los Angeles district attorneys being hotly contested. Incumbent DA George Gascon's efforts to implement progressive criminal justice reforms have generated pushback from within his own office, the broader law enforcement community, and some in the general public. He was the subject of at least two failed attempts to qualify recalls. The concerns about crime are reflected in the polling results of black voters. Nearly one in four have been victims of violent crime or have someone close to them who has been a victim. One in five black voters have personally been victims of property crime in the last two years. A majority of respondents feel less safe than they did a year or two ago, but they reject the notion that criminal justice reform has gone too far. This year, black voters will be looking for candidates who speak to the complexity of the issues as opposed to a one-size-fits-all approach. Nearly half of black voters have an unfavorable view of DA Gascon, but his challengers are largely unknown. Nearly half of the black voters are also undecided, which means there's a clear opportunity for candidates to connect with black voters. Our poll makes three things abundantly clear. Black voters matter. Black voters are closely following this race, and the candidates for DA have a lot of work to do. KBLA Talk fifteen eighty is committed to the mobilization and use of the franchise to empower our audience to identify and pursue their interest in advancing equity, inclusive representation, and multiracial solidarity. For KBLA Talk fifteen eighty, I'm Dr. Nekordalai Cortez. We welcome your feedback.
and I'm so glad to see you and me back in stride again. Before we get started with today's show, let me invite you to follow me on Facebook and Instagram at the real Tavis Smiley and get updates on X, that's formerly Twitter, at Tavis Smiley. By the way, should you miss any part of today's program or want to catch up on previous shows, you can always visit thetavissmileyshow.com, that's thetavissmileyshow.com, or wherever you get your podcasts, and listen to the Tavis Smiley podcast version of this live program at your leisure. Another great show on tap for you today in our second hour will speak with UCLA sociology professor and author Dr. Marcus Anthony Hunter about his provocative new text Radical Reparations: Healing the Soul of a Nation. I know there's some who think that's oxymoronic, that you can engage in radical reparations and yet heal the soul of this nation. That's his book. We'll talk about it with Marcus Anthony Hunter today in our second hour. In our third hour, Donnell Rawlings joins us to talk about his first stand-up comedy special, A New Day, on Netflix, produced by his longtime friend, some guy named Dave Chappelle. This is one of four specials Dave is producing for Netflix. As you recall, we've had the other two persons on already whose specials Dave produced. That would be Earthquake and Lunel. Now up, Donnell Rawlings. Dave Chappelle is doing it big on Netflix for all his friends. And so we'll talk to Donnell Rawlings today about his stand-up special, get some laughs on in our third and final hour. But let's commence today's show talking politics with the Amy Goodman. I am so honored, as always, to be in dialogue with Amy Goodman. She is celebrating now, get this, her twenty-eighth anniversary this month, twenty-eight years as host of one of my favorite programs, Democracy Now. Amy Goodman, congratulations. Good to have you on this program. How are you?
Oh, I'm great, Tavis, and hello to all your listeners, and congratulations to you on KBLA.
No, thank you. It's a delight to be in this space with you as we try to do our part to, to bring to the national audience more progressive radio. You know this better than anybody. I call talk radio in this country a conservative citadel, and yet there are, there are a handful of voices that have broken through, and nobody's done it quite like you, and you've done it independently. The media, as you well know, is corporatist, no question about that. Only two or three companies pretty much own everything these days. But for twenty-eight years, you've come up, as we say in the black church, the rough side of the mountain. You've cut against the grain for twenty-eight years, and everybody knows Amy Goodman and Democracy Now. How have you done it so successfully for twenty-eight years?
Well, first of all, I work with an amazing team of people. And, you know, we come out of the Pacifica Radio Network, though we're a separate organization. And that was founded seventy-five years ago in the Bay Area. A war resister named Lou Hill came out of the detention camps after World War II and said, there's got to be a media outlet, not run by corporations that profit from war, but run by journalists and artists. And so that was the beginning of Pacifica. In Bay Area, in Los Angeles, in New York, WBAI, Washington, and KPFT in Houston, went on the air in nineteen seventy. It wasn't weeks before the Ku Klux Klan strapped dynamite to the base of the transmitter in Houston and blew KPFT's transmitter off the air.
Wow.
They got back on the air a few weeks later, and then the Klan strapped fifteen times the dynamite to the base of the transmitter and blew it up again, right in the middle of Arlo Guthrie singing Alice's Restaurant, which I thought was a good song, but anyway. Then it took some months to get back on the air. And in nineteen seventy-one January, Arlo went back to Houston to finish his song, and then the media was covering it, and KPFT went back on the air. I can't remember if it was the Grand Dragon or the Exalted Cyclops, because I often confuse their titles, but he said it was his proudest act. And I think that's because he understood how dangerous independent media can be. Dangerous because it allows people to speak for themselves. And when you hear someone speaking from their own experience, whether it's a Palestinian child, or an Israeli grandmother, or an uncle in the South Bronx, or an aunt in Iraq, who say, oh, my gosh, that sounds like my aunt, that sounds like my uncle, and you might not even like your uncle, but it might, makes it much less likely for you to want to destroy that person. And I really do think that that is the beginning of peace. That understanding is the beginning of peace. And I think the media can be the greatest force for peace on earth. Instead, all too often, it's wielded as a weapon of war.
It's called Democracy Now!, the War and Peace Report, for obvious reasons. Nobody has done it better than Amy Goodman for twenty-eight years now, celebrating that milestone this month, as she takes off on another year. And of course, it's presidential election season, so there's a whole lot. And of course, it's presidential election season, so there's a whole lot of news, political news and beyond to talk about with Amy Goodman in this first hour. Tomorrow's the primary in Michigan. Just a lot of news. A big article in the New York Times today about Joe Biden doing a 180 on immigration. Another story I read today about a divided White House. There are those inside the White House, not outside, inside, on the president's team. There's a divide about his own age and his policy on Israel. Huge divide inside the Biden White House, we are told. And another major story, Congress failed to pass legislation to avoid a shutdown come Friday. Oh, Lord, I'm just getting started. A whole lot to talk about with Amy Goodman this hour. And who knew that backstory? I've known Amy for years, and I didn't know the backstory. You know, independent media must be dangerous when the Klan blows up your tower, not once, but twice. It's going to be fire for the hour with Amy Goodman of Democracy Now! on Tavis Smiley.
What is dedication?
My biggest fear in the middle of my addiction was that my kids wouldn't have a father. And I started thinking, you know what? This isn't my story. I definitely had to become a better man to be a better father. It's important to me that my kids are empowered and truly believe that if they can think it, they can do it.
That's dedication. Visit fatherhood.gov to hear more. Brought to you by the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services and the Ad Council.
Joey from Vermont, a farmer trying to get through the winter. Adriana from South Carolina, a single mother living paycheck to paycheck. Liam from Ohio, an injured father struggling to provide for his family. Hi, I'm Shanola Hampton, and I support the Feeding America Network of Food Banks because they help provide over 6 billion meals to people in need each year. Learn more at feedingamerica.org.
Politics has become so messy lately, it's hard to find a reason to be hopeful. Hi, my name is Shakira. I'd like to tell you why Adam Schiff gives me hope. My parents raised me to take my right to vote seriously, so I try to stay on top of what's going on. I saw Adam Schiff lead the impeachment and insurrection hearings. He seemed like someone I could believe in. Then I actually met him at the M O K parade in South Central LA this year. Adam listened. He cared. I got to see who he is. He understands the struggle we have with the cost of living, all the parents working extra shifts and taking second jobs to get by. He gets a threat to our democracy and our freedoms. Adam Schiff knows how tough things really are for a lot of us, and I believe he's going to do something about it. It gives me hope, but hope isn't enough. We need to vote for Adam Schiff for Senate.
I'm Adam Schiff, and I approve this message.
Paid for by Schiff for Senate.
Girl, I have a secret. When I get stressed out, I get sweaty. That's why I use Secret Clinical Antiperspirant. It's like my own secret weapon. For 72 hours, I get Secret's strongest protection against sweat caused by stress, heat, and activity, because you know how crazy life can get. Plus, it's made with advanced odor fighters that don't just cover up smelliness. They help prevent it from happening in the first place. Believe me, if I weren't wearing Secret, I'd be a hot, smelly mess. Thankfully, Secret works.
Let's get back to more of Tavis Smiley right now.
Back to more of Amy Goodman right now, who I am celebrating in this hour as she now embarks on year 28 as the host of Democracy Now! You know, Amy, that title is certainly a double, maybe triple, quadruple entendre. When you used the phrase, when you came up with that phrase, Democracy Now!, how did you intend for us to parse that?
I mean, I think it is a demand, and I think it is the, that media is the most important agent or the most important force for Democracy Now!, to have a free and open media. And that's what we have to fight for every day, which actually makes me think of another news story, which is Julian Assange. And folks may not hear very much about him in the U.S. media, but this is a guy who's been imprisoned for years in the notorious Belmarsh Maximum Security Prison in Britain. He was a founder of WikiLeaks, which released so much information about Iraq and Afghanistan, State Department logs going back decades. Not a favorite of any government, Republican or Democrat, because, you know, he's actually doing what journalists do. I mean, you think of Evan Gershkovitz in Russia. What was he doing? He was arrested by Putin's men when he was going after military secrets, because that's what the best journalists all over the world do. You think of Cy Hirsch exposing the Meili massacre. Governments don't like this, but that's our role as journalists, is to go to where the silence is. So you have Julian Assange. He is arrested by the British government, not for something he did in Britain, but because the U.S. wants to extradite him to the United States where he would be tried and found guilty. He faces 175 years in prison. Two weeks ago, the Australian government, he's Australian, the parliament, passed a resolution across the political spectrum, nothing united them, and they're divided like they are in the United States, like Julian Assange, saying, you must free this man. He has spent years behind bars, at least four years in Belmarsh, and before that Ecuador granted him political asylum, but he could only make it as far in London to the Ecuadorian embassy, where he lived for like seven years. I interviewed him a number of times. You're cramped up in this tiny embassy. So he has been basically in detention for well over a decade. But it's not about Julian. It is about a free press. And we have covered this story for years, and President Biden, when he was vice president, called him a high-tech terrorist because he released documents. Now, what's an example of those documents? You know, video and paper. In 2007, a group of men in Iraq, Iraqis, were walking, and a U.S. Apache helicopter flew overhead at them. And they weren't rogue, these soldiers in the helicopter. And we know all this because there was, there was video in the helicopter, not a peace activist on the ground. And you hear the men cursing and screaming, these are these soldiers cursing and laughing, and they call back to base, can we engage? And they opened fire in this group of men below. They kill them. One of them is hobbling, crawling away, has been hit, and a van pulls up a dad with his two kids going to school, tries to help the men, and they blow up the van. And two of those men worked for Reuters, Namir Nor Eldin, an up-and-coming 22-year-old videographer, and his driver, Said Shama, father of four, 40 years old, they were killed. Reuters asked repeatedly from the U.S. military, we want to see, we know you have a video. They wouldn't release it. Ultimately, Julian Assange at WikiLeaks released it, and it was under the title collateral murder. It was basically showing a war crime. They released it in 2010. And this is, of course, what the U.S. government doesn't want you to see, just like they didn't want people to know about the Meili massacre, where U.S. soldiers opened fire and killed hundreds of Vietnamese men, women, children, and infants. But it's our job as journalists. We're supposed to hold those in power accountable so that acts like these won't get repeated. And that's exactly what WikiLeaks did over and over again. So Australia's asking for them to drop the charges. There was just a hearing last week in the High Court in Britain, and we'll see what happens.
As I listen to you tell that story, I am reminded, and I kind of intimated this earlier, that we live in a country where there are really just a few sources now that control most of all the media, the corporate media, that we read, watch, listen to, the social, the internet is a whole nother issue. But what's the price? To your mind, what is the price that we pay for having media that is so entrenched in corporate America?
I mean, it is a threat to democracy. It's as simple as that. It's not only corporations, it's the government. You know, I covered Haiti for a lot of years, and one of the things that would happen when a coup would begin in Haiti was the cougars, the thugs, would go after the radio stations where they said they played musique engagée, engaged music. You know, we are there not only to inform, because I think of so much of the corporate media that's got those pundits on who know so little about so much, explaining the world to us and getting it so wrong, but to provide a platform for people to speak for themselves. That primally, when you listen to someone, it changes you. And that's what we have to do, is to provide a forum for, well, I see the media as a huge kitchen table that stretches across the globe, that we all sit around and debate and discuss the most important issues of the day, war and peace, life and death, and anything less than that is a disservice to a democratic society.
Let me ask you a question. You and I have been friends for many years now, and I don't know, well, I know I haven't. I've never asked you this question, so brace yourself. I want to ask you now. Tell me why it is, is it by choice or is it by chance that we don't see your face, that we don't hear your voice more in that corporate media? I'm talking now, why don't I see Amy Goodman on Meet the Press and Face the Nation? Why don't I see you on CNN? Why don't I see you on MSNBC? Why don't I see you on Fox? I mean, all of these outlets, we see, to your point, these talking heads, these pundits all the time. Nobody in this country has a larger following in independent media than you do. You're on television and radio all day, every day, somewhere in this country. And yet, for all that you represent and for all the stories that you break and for all the stories that you cover that corporate media doesn't cover, one would think, I'm not naive here, one would think that by bringing Amy Goodman on, you're going to get a different take, a different perspective because of what you do so well with your team every day. So is it by choice or by chance that we don't see and hear more of you in the corporate media?
Well, Tavis, I'm not a retired general. I'm not a Colonel, but I am trying to bring people a kernel of truth and bring people a different kind of general news. But I even want to say for that, I mean, we interview plenty of military folks. But in the media, when you have a general who is dragging their feet on war, or a Colonel who is saying, we really got to question what's happening, you rarely see them as well. And I think what happens in the corporate media is you have this strict divide. Are you representing the Democrats or are you representing the Republicans? And when we see things in a very different way, like you do too, that changes the whole picture. They can't neatly peg you and say you're going to be on this side or that. And I say it's on the side of democracy, and answers are not that simple. And, you know, what I'm happy about is I found at the beginning of my career what journalists look for their whole lives, and that is independence. And that's what's so important. You know, actually, just as we hit our 28th anniversary on February 19th, I didn't say it on February 19th because we were too busy with the news, but I said it with Juan Gonzalez, who does, who's been doing with me for 28 years, and that's also a great honor. We talked about that, and we also, that day, passed the 2 million subscriber mark on YouTube. And so people are accessing Democracy Now! all over the world.
Yeah. No, it's an amazing journey. And for those of us who are in the independent lane with you, trust and believe. I know this is not a cakewalk. It is not easy. It's a challenge every single day for funding and for access and for opportunity. It is not easy. But again, I celebrate Amy Goodman on this program and in this hour, as we're heard across the country, because nobody has done it quite like Amy has done it and does it every single day, bringing us a different perspective that we don't hear elsewhere. Let me, I'm watching my clock here. Let me move now and cover some topics, some political trending topics that I want to get your take on. I don't need to color these things too much for you. I'll just throw them at you. So tomorrow is the Michigan primary. What say you about that? We're all watching it. We all have been covering the story, of course, a variety of stories about the Arab-American community and Rashida Tlaib and those who told Biden, don't even think about coming here. I mean, there's a lot to unpack here about Michigan as a primary state. Joe Biden only won it by three points over Trump a few years ago. He may be in trouble in Michigan. Your thoughts?
Yeah, it's really important. Michigan is a battleground state, and you have a group of Arab-American leaders in Michigan who are saying for this primary, I think it's uber fisky now, like the mayor of Dearborn, Michigan, which has one of the highest populations of Arab-Americans in the country. Mayor Hamud is saying they are voting uncommitted for the primary. This is very serious. It's like, remember when, I think it was Nevada where Nikki Haley lost and none of the above?
That's right.
If Biden is challenged by uncommitted, that's a very big problem for him. I mean, overall, obviously, he's not really challenged in Michigan, but clearly, the Biden administration is concerned about this because they've been sending people out to court the Arab-American community. And what these Arab-American leaders are saying, first, I think they sent out Julie Chavez Rodriguez, who is his campaign manager, and many said they wouldn't meet with her because they didn't want to meet with the campaign manager. They wanted to talk policy because they're deeply concerned about what's happening in Israel and Gaza. I mean, we are talking about nearly and probably far more than 30,000 people dead in Gaza. It is horrifying. Today reported on a two-month-old baby boy, two-month-old baby boy, who starved to death in Gaza. The level of hunger now, we talked to the award-winning poet, Masab Abu Toha. He writes for The New Yorker magazine today, and he and his family made it out, and after he was detained, by the way, by the Israeli military, they made it out to Cairo, but his brother, his sister-in-law, who just had a baby in Gaza, they didn't make it out, and they're eating animal feed. And, you know, every international, many international agencies, especially the United Nations, the World Food Program had to stop, had to pull out. You have UNRWA, that is the major source of support, supporting hospitals, healthcare in Gaza, under siege, and Biden pulled the funding for UNRWA that serves thousands of Palestinians. They are facing massive starvation, let alone the daily assaults. And this is directly tied to the Arab-American community in Dearborn. I think of Dr. Tarek Hadad. This is a cardiologist who just spilled his heart on Democracy Now! He lives in Virginia. He was invited by Secretary of State Tony Blinken to a roundtable discussion, and he said he lost 100 members of his family in Gaza. And he refused to meet with Blinken. He said, we are not campaign fodder. We need a ceasefire in Gaza. We need peace. I think of an amazing guy who just died, 93 years old, Johan Galtung, considered the father of peace studies in the world. He's from Norway. And what a ceasefire would mean. It would mean saving the lives of thousands of people, like Johns Hopkins just did a study and said, if there was a ceasefire today, at least immediately, 75,000, over time, people's lives would be saved. This is terrifying, what's happening in the Arab-American community right now, is most sensitive to it, but I also have to say the Jewish community. I mean, you have Jewish Voice for Peace. I was covering the Grand Central Terminal Demonstration in New York. Thousands of Jewish Americans, led by Holocaust survivors, professors, students, 400 of them got arrested, saying, not in my name, ceasefire now. Michigan matters tomorrow. Biden understands that. Tavis, you just said yes. There is a major battle going on within the Biden administration. You had a group of top folks from the Biden administration after the Arab-American leaders refused to meet with the campaign manager. John Finer, I think he's the Deputy National Security Advisor, Samantha Powers, you know, she's now head of USAID. Prop officials went out and had a private meeting with Arab-American leaders who would meet with them. And the New York Times got ahold of a recording of the meeting, and you had John Finer saying, we have made serious mistakes.
Let me, let me, let me.
They talked about the statements, yeah.
Let me pause for a second there. I was just watching this clock here. When we come forward, I want to come right back to this issue because this is significant. Amy's unpacking it brilliantly and beautifully, as she always does every day on her own program, Democracy Now!, now celebrating 28 years. But this is a major piece today in the New York Times. If you haven't had a chance to pull it yet, pull it for yourself, read it for yourself. But there is a divide in the White House, we are told, among the president's team, amongst his team, about two issues. One, about his Israel policy and about his age. I mean, so we in the media, corporate or independent, talk about these issues every day, the president's age and his policy in Israel. And it's one thing for us to talk about on the outside, but inside the White House, there is a divide amongst his own team on these issues. We'll unpack that a bit more and cover a few other topics when we come forward with our guest in this hour, the host for 28 years now, Democracy Now!, the War and Peace Report, Amy Goodman, who's on Tavis Smiley.
What's your quarrel with the world? You're listening to Travis Smiley.
If you're like me, 60 and retired, making ends meet, especially here at the supermarket and drugstore is tough. I'm so blessed to have found benefitscheckup.org. It's a free and confidential website from the National Council on Aging that connected me to $1,200 a year in programs that help pay for food, medicine, utilities, and more. Maybe it can help you. Benefitscheckup.org.
My daughter was diagnosed with a rare malignant radiculitis tumor on the spine. They sent her straight to St. Jude. My hope was gone. But when you get there, everyone's like, hey, we're not going to give up. And when you see other people not giving up on your child, that makes a lot of difference in the world. When I found out I didn't have to pay, I was just grateful. They saved my baby's life.
Finding cures, saving children. Learn more at stjude.org.
I'm Mike Moore. Here's the latest from the Black Information Network. Both President Biden and Donald Trump will visit the U.S.-Mexico border in Texas this week. Biden will travel to Brownsville Thursday to meet with Border Patrol agents, law enforcement, and local leaders, and call for the need to pass the Senate bipartisan border security deal. Trump will reportedly visit Eagle Pass, Texas on the same day and deliver remarks. It comes as the Biden administration is facing pressure to stop the surge of migrants at the southern border. Goochlin County, Virginia, is honoring the legacy of 14 students who made history. The County Historical Society yesterday unveiled a plaque that pays tribute to the first black student at Goochlin High School. One of the students who integrated at the school in 1965 was there. He remembers not being afraid, just angry. And that's the latest I might more from your 24/7 news source, the Black Information Network and B I N News.com.
Joe Buck and Johnson molds welcoming you back to the city center convenience mart.
Uh-oh.
She's looking at the cigarettes, but she just grabs the gum off the counter. Stand up to cancer and rally. Want you to reduce your risk for cancer. Go to takeaheltystand.org.
This is the KBLA Sports Minute with Ray Richardson.
Another rough day for both of LA's NBA teams. The Lakers lost by 10 in Phoenix. The Clippers lost by 16 at home to Sacramento. All five Lakers starters scored in double figures, but the Lakers got only 16 points off the bench. LeBron finished with 28 points and 12 assists. The Lakers are still three games behind Dallas for the eighth and final playoff spot in the Western Conference. The Lakers are back in action Wednesday night against the Clippers, who also need to regroup. Paul George did not play yesterday. He's got a sore left knee. Norman Powell started in George's absence. He led the Clippers with 21. Utah's women's basketball team snapped USC's seven-game winning streak. Utah won by six at Galen Center. The Trojans dropped to 11-5 in the Pac-12. USC freshman Juju Watkins had a game-high 30 points. The 12th time this season, the Compton native has had 30 or more. No debates, no speculation, just the info you need. That's your KBLA Sports Minute. I'm Ray Richardson on KBLA Talk 1580.
We've got lots to talk about.
Hi, I'm Ray Richardson, your sports connection here at KBLA Talk 1580. Join me and my co-host Neil Scarborough every Saturday night at 7 for Out of Bounds, the show that brings some flavor to the world of sports for 60 minutes. We take you beyond the scores and press conferences. We give you our point of view, the way black folks see what's going down. You can join the conversation and give us your analysis at 1-800-920-1580. Out of Bounds, every Saturday night at 7 on KBLA Talk 1580. We've got a lot to talk about.
On a politically progressive, KBLA Talk 1580, we've got your black.
You like your style, dawg.
You're listening to KBLA Talk 1580, where climate is king.
Looking for a career you love with flexibility, great pay and benefits, and one of the country's top workplaces? Join the growing team at Progressive Insurance. Go to progressive.com/careers and apply online today.
KBLA Talk 1580 is the exclusive media sponsor of This Light of Ours, activist photographers of the civil rights movement. A dynamic new exhibition on view now at the Skirball Cultural Center in Los Angeles. This Light of Ours showcases more than 150 photos taken by movement insiders from diverse backgrounds that reveal the vital work undertaken by a broad coalition of organizers and everyday people whose collective action changed America. This Light of Ours is one of three temporary exhibitions currently on view at the Skirball, which together explore issues related to civil rights, immigration, and pluralism. Tickets and more information for all three exhibitions are available at skirball.org. That's skirball.org,
Some people just know the best places to eat around town. Those are the people who know to choose Allstate. They know exactly where to go to get exactly what you're wanting. They know where to find the spiciest hot pot, the gooeyest brownies, and the tenderest, most flavorful portobello steak. Those people also know that safe drivers save 40% with Allstate.
Saving 40% is based on the national average premium savings for Allstate auto customers with a clean driving record versus those without. Savings vary by state and vary based on how you buy. Subject to terms, conditions, and availability. Allstate, fair and casual. Insurance company and affiliates, North Brick London.
We're from Washington. We love Febreze's new scent. Refresh and energize.
He's rooting for everybody black. More of Travis Smiley coming your way right now.
I'm rooting for Amy Goodman, although she doesn't need my cheerleading. She's done quite well for 28 years as the host of Democracy Now!, the War and Peace Report, and how thrilled am I to once again, in the course of my career, broadcast career, to be in dialogue on my stage, my program with Amy Goodman, and what a conversation it's been so far. And I want to continue and make the most of the time I have left between now and the top of the hour. So Amy, we were talking about, about, about the White House. And I, I just want to just get, get a little deeper into this. As I said a moment ago, it's one thing for us in the media, corporate or independent media, to be talking about these issues every day. But when these stories break about the divide that is in the White House, of course, publicly, they want to put on a united front. But now we know, courtesy to, courtesy of a number of sources, and indeed, another big story today in the New York Times, we now know that there's a divide inside the Biden White House. And again, every administration doesn't have to be in lockstep. That's why you have these private meetings behind closed doors. They argue, they fight, they come to conclusions, they come to decisions. So it's, it's politics. I get it. And then everybody has a chance to express themselves in these meetings in the White House. And I've been in a few of them over the course of my career. But when we read these kinds of stories, that they are divided about his age, and whether he should stay in the race, they're divided inside the Biden White House about his Israel policy. On the outside, how do you read the division on the inside?
I mean, it's really interesting on the inside. I think of Josh Paul. He was a top-level guy in the State Department in charge of military procurement or sales. And when, after the Israeli assault on Gaza began, he just could not countenance it anymore. And he quit, and he issued a public letter. We've spoken to him a number of times. I think about the thousand black pastors from across the country saying they haven't seen anything like this among their congregants since the civil rights movement. The level of rage about where the Biden administration is standing. I mean, you have in the last week, once again, for the third time, the Biden administration vetoed the U.N. Security Council resolution for a ceasefire. We had on Bishop William Barber, who said all moral leaders needed to say no to what Hamas did to children and women, and no, no, no to what Israel, the Israeli government in Netanyahu is now continuing to do. You know, he wrote this article, and he said, I wrote about Hamas. I also challenged the apartheid state that the Netanyahu regime has had in Israel. We said we must speak as one voice, Christians, Muslims, and Jews, to say the indiscriminate killing of women and children in this war is immoral. And, you know, youth, the divide among youth is, it's like, Biden had 80% of the youth, has 20% of the youth. And as we were talking about, the Arab American community is up to 60%, now down to 17%. And people in the White House represent all of these groups, and they understand, and they're feeling the outcry around this policy and asking, you know, Joe Biden, why? It's not as if Joe Biden has championed or embraced Netanyahu for decades. It's not as if, like Trump, they were best of friends. So why they're asking, is he continuing, even though he will increasingly say, we're questioning, we're putting hard questions Netanyahu, we're telling him not to build more settlements. But, you know, the proof is not in the talk, it's the walk, and it's the level of armsales that they are using to kill Palestinians every day. And Jews, more than anyone, I mean, I speak also as a Jewish journalist, Jews, more than anyone know, you know, out of the Holocaust, we said never again. And that's never again for everyone.
Yeah. It's a, it is a conundrum, for lack of a better word. And we will see what the president does or doesn't do in the coming days, now that we are talking publicly about what's happening privately inside the White House with regard to this divide. Let me cover a couple of things here. Let me move to this immigration issue. Again, a number of major pieces I was reading today in preparation for my dialogue with you about the president and immigration and the threat that it has become to his reelection bid. Trump has outflanked him on this issue. And by outflanked him, I mean that the immigration issue has gotten worse. Illegal immigration issue has gotten worse in his tenure, in his term. And he now feels politically vulnerable on this issue. If you were Joe Biden on the immigration issue, what would you do?
Well, I'm a journalist, and I hold those in power accountable. So I'm not Joe Biden. But I think what has horrified many immigration rights activists, certainly that we have talked to, is that you had, you know, Trump separating families, incarcerating babies. And then people voted for President Biden. They said, you know, immigration rights activists for humane policy. And in order for Biden to get past the billions he wants to send to Ukraine and to Israel, the Republicans insisted on militarizing the border even further. And so there were negotiations that went on in the Senate, and they agreed, the Democrats and the Republicans, to the horror of many immigrant rights activists, agreed on a much more militarized border. And then because Trump saw there was some level, level of bipartisanship, he told House Speaker Johnson, whatever you do, do not accept this. And so it was a Republican plan that the Democrats embraced, and then Trump vetoed it. And so you have this crazy situation right now. And who are victimized? It's people who are seeking sanctuary in this country, why our country was founded. And they are really at the target end of U.S. policy, whether it's Republican or Democrat. It's a very serious issue. We also just interviewed Darlene Joseph, who is head of the Haitian Bridge Alliance out of California. She was in Washington, because you remember those famous pictures at Del Rio where we had the Border Patrol-
On the horseback?
With rain sweeping the Haitians near the Del Rio Bridge.
Sure.
They're suing right now, and they're demanding to stop the deportations in a very dangerous situation, and for what's happened to them at the border. I mean, we have to have a very serious bipartisan look at why people come to this country. And it comes from a good portion of it, U.S. foreign policy in places like Guatemala and Honduras, where many immigrants come from. Because the U.S. has supported these regimes over the years that engaged in massacres, engaged in genocide, and people flee. And people also follow the money. And when the money is going to the United States, we allow the money to come in here. Trade with Mexico is enormous, right? Allow the money to come in. But when people follow their money, we bring down the gates.
Yeah. No, it's, it is, the president's in a pickle on this issue. In, in some regards of his own doing, and to your brilliant analysis, in some regards because of the way Republicans have boxed him in. But he is clearly vulnerable on this immigration issue, and how he moves in the coming days, we shall see. When we come forward with our guest, Amy Goodman, now celebrating 28 years as host of Democracy Now!, the War and Peace Report, the Congress failed to pass legislation that would avoid, avert a government shutdown on Friday. So here we are once again. Every few months, we kick this can down the road, and here we are all this week. Today's Monday. So all week long, this will be the story. Will the government shut down once again on Friday? We shall see. But we'll get Amy's take on that. And then we'll close our program in this hour, I should say, with our conversation, not our program. I still got two hours to go. We'll close this hour with Amy Goodman talking about a person that we both regard as a friend, a very, very dear friend of mine, who is being memorialized this Friday. Indeed, over the weekend, I received an award named for him, a major award that bears his name. I was the recipient of that award this weekend, and he is being memorialized this Friday. And I want to close our program in tribute to him. We'll talk about him when we come forward, Amy Goodman on Travis Smiley.
Interrogating and unpacking. That's what we do around here. You're listening to Travis Smiley.
What is dedication?
My biggest fear in the middle of my addiction was that my kids wouldn't have a father. And I started thinking, you know what? This isn't my story. I definitely had to become a better man to be a better father. It's important to me that my kids are empowered and truly believe that if, if they can think it, they can do it.
That's dedication. Visit fatherhood.gov to hear more. Brought to you by the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services and the Ad Council.
Joey from Vermont, a farmer trying to get through the winter. Adriana from South Carolina, a single mother living paycheck to paycheck. Liam from Ohio, an injured father struggling to provide for his family. Hi, I'm Shonola Hampton, and I support the Feeding America network of food banks because they help provide over 6 billion meals to people in need each year. Learn more at feedingamerica.org.
At KBLA Talk 1580, we do Black History every single day. In fact, as the only black talk radio station west of the Mississippi, we are Black History. Our annual Black History Month luncheon is fast approaching, and we want to be sure to give you ample time to get your company, organization, church, or group to join us at this year's celebration on the last day of the month, Thursday, February 29th at noon. Last year, we honored iconic local black media personalities, including Pat Harvey, Jim Hill, Mark Brown, Beverly White, Sandy Banks, and Pat Prescott, and raised $20,000 in scholarships. This year, we're honoring black Hollywood creatives who have used their artistic genius as climate justice champions. At this year's luncheon, we will be showcasing and sharing their inspiring work on our big screen, plus a scrumptious meal, live music, great company, and lots of fun with your favorite KBLA Talk 1580 hosts. So contact us today at info@smileiaudiodmedia.com or call 323-290-4690. That's info@smileiaudiodmedia.com or call 323-290-4690. We hope to see you Thursday, February 29th, as we close out Black History Month at KBLA Talk 1580. We've got your black.
City of Los Angeles tenants know these facts about eviction and consumer debt. Tenants can't be evicted if rental arrears are eligible to be treated as consumer debt. Tenants who followed certain COVID-19 pandemic protections under state law can't be evicted for past due rent. Landlords can collect rental arrears in court as consumer debt, but tenants cannot be evicted if they provided a declaration of COVID-19 hardship and paid 25% of rent owed. Learn more at housing.lacity.org. Be informed, be protected, be at home.
More honesty than you can handle.
More empowerment than you can imagine.
You're tuned into Travis Smiley.
This Friday, we will memorialize our dear friend and brother, Harry Belafonte, passed, as you know, some time ago. But a major memorial in New York City this Friday at the Riverside Church. I've been there so many times, probably not as many times as Amy Goodman, because she's based in New York City. I've spoken in that facility many times and attended many programs. Riverside is the place. And this Friday, we will memorialize our friend and brother, Harry Belafonte. We'll get to that in a moment. Before we close our hour with Amy, talking about Harry Belafonte, Amy, your thoughts on this notion, at least as we sit right now, that there could be another government shutdown on Friday? on Friday?
Well, first of all, it's wonderful to hear Harry's voice. Oh, my goodness, as he would have turned 97 on Friday, and I'm thrilled to hear you're going to be there, because I'm going to be there too. I'll get to see you, Tavis, at Riverside Church, where Dr. King gave that name address a year to the day before he was assassinated. You know about it, you wrote books about it. But you know, it's why he opposed the war in Vietnam. And Harry Belafonte, oh, I'll just say, government closure, biggest problem for people at the bottom. That's who always suffers, right? If you have government closure, you don't have the president, you don't have the House Speaker losing their jobs. But what happens is people get laid off, and it's a very serious issue. And it's about time people at the top and people in Congress understand what that means, even for people to live in fear leading up to that moment is unacceptable, that they might not be able to feed their families.
No, it's.
But on the issue of Harry.
Hold that thought, hold that thought, hold that thought, one second, one second, Amy. Let me do this one more time, and I promise we'll close with your thoughts, which I'm anxious to hear. You spent some good time with Harry over the years, and so have I, and I want to just close our program in this hour, at least in tribute to Harry Belafonte. We'll do that with Amy Goodman when we come forward on Tavis Smiley.
For all the freedom-loving folk, this is Tavis Smiley.
If you're like me, 60 and retired, Mickey ends me, especially here at the supermarket and drugstore is tough. I'm so blessed to have found benefitscheckup.org. It's a free and confidential website from the National Council on Aging that connected me to $1,200 a year in programs that help pay for food, medicine, utilities, and more. Maybe it can help you. Benefitscheckup.org.
My daughter was diagnosed with a rare malignant rhabdomyoid tumor on the spine. They sent her straight to St. Jude. My hope was gone, but when you get there, everyone's like, hey, we're not going to give up. And when you see other people not giving up on your child, that makes all the difference in the world. When I found out I didn't have to pay, I was just grateful they saved my baby's life.
Finding cures saving children. Learn more at stjude.org.
KBLA Talk 1580. We've got a lot to talk about.
KBLA Talk 1580 reminding you that we keep us safe. Pro football Hall of Famer and urban peace pioneer Jim Brown believed in just that. So he founded the Ameriican Foundation for Social Change in 1988, focusing on at-risk and high-risk youth in underserved schools and juvenile detention facilities, as well as adult incarceration and reentry initiatives. The core of the Ameriican program is its 15-chapter life skills curriculum. Mastery of these skills allows individuals to meet their academic potential, conform their behavior to acceptable societal standards, and improve the quality of their lives by equipping them with what they need to confidently and successfully contribute to society. Today, the foundation is led by its president, Monique Brown, who has been actively involved in the organization for more than 25 years. The Ameriican Foundation continues its work in memory of its founder, actor, philanthropist, and NFL legend, Jim Brown. To get involved or make a donation, please visit americancommunity.p partners. That's americancommunity.p partners. This is a community call to action from KBLA Talk 1580.
eBay Motors is here for the ride. 120,000 miles of night drives, daily commutes, and who knows how many.
Are we there yet?
Through countless fixes, elbow grease, and a new radiator, you kept your ride alive. With eBay Motors, you have over 122 million parts to keep it running. And with eBay Guaranteed Fit, they'll be the perfect fit every time. Plus, at these prices, well, we're burning rubber, not cash. Keep your ride or die alive at ebaymotors.com. Eligible items only. Exclusions apply.
Helping to make you the most knowledgeable person in your circle of friends. This is Tavis Smiley.
This Friday would be Harry Belafonte's 97th birthday, and there is a major memorial to him taking place in New York City at the Riverside Church on the Upper West Side, celebrating the life and legacy of Mr. B., as I called him for many decades. Amy Goodman, your thoughts about our friend, Harry Belafonte? Amy, can you hear me? Amy, Amy.
I hear you.
There you go.
Oh, my gosh. I mean, for people who don't know, you know, we're coming into the Oscars soon. Harry Belafonte's 1956 album, Calypso, made him the first artist in history to sell more than a million LPs, won both a Tony and Emmy Award at the National Medal of Arts. But it is his involvement with civil rights activism, his close friendship with Dr. King. I think he said he talked to him once, he met him every day. And I used to say to Harry, I used to say to Mr. B., if you ever forget any of those conversations, just apply under the Freedom of Information Act to the FBI. I bet they have transcripts.
That's funny, and it's funny because it's probably true. I'm sure they do have the transcripts. What do you make of his unwavering, unapologetic advent into advocacy, into engaging in the civil rights movement at a time when many artists, and even today, and people have a right to self-determination, there are artists who want to just be artists. They don't want to engage and involve themselves with the politics of the day. I call Mr. B. a citizen artist. I always called him that. He was a citizen artist. And again, people have the right to self-determination, but he was so bold about it, Amy.
You're right. Mr. B. stands for bold and brave. You know, he was friends with Paul Robeson, Eleanor Roosevelt, Sidney Poitier, Kennedy, Marlon Brando, Nelson Mandela, Fidel Castro, Tony Bennett, Bill Clinton. He ran the gamut, and everyone loved him and I think feared him because he was just unwavering because he lived it. He lived the discrimination, right? He would be invited into the greatest venues to sing, but not be allowed to stay there. So he knew it personally, but it wasn't just because it was personal. He felt the pain of people who suffered for so long, and he was not, you know, at the end of his life, he was going into prisons, he was working with people who were incarcerated. He, every fiber of his soul was about being a humanitarian.
There's a great organization here in L.A. called Second Call and run by a brilliant brother named Skip, and they have an annual event. And at their event, a few days ago, they bestowed upon me, I was honored to receive the Harry Belafonte Award. Gina Belafonte, Mr. B.'s daughter, as you know, presented the award to me. So it's a great honor to receive anything that bears his name, and I can just only hope and pray that in my lifetime, we honor his legacy by doing what you do every day, and that is speaking truth to power, and for that matter, to the powerless. As you celebrate your 28th anniversary this month, hosting Democracy Now!, the War and Peace Report, what are you recommitting yourself to for the years to come, Amy Goodman?
Committing ourselves to being a platform for people who so often go unheard. You know, when we talk about the death penalty, to go behind the bars that are behind the bars and hear from people on death row. When we talk about criminal justice or injustice, to hear from people on both sides of the bars, and to have a global platform for people to speak to each other across the planet. It's to make the world smaller, because we're all in this together.
We are in it together. And we'll leave it there for now. I am always, as I said an hour ago now, delighted to be in dialogue.
And congratulations on your Harry Belafonte Award.
Oh, no. You are, you are too kind, Amy. I love you, and I deeply appreciate you. Congratulations on your 28th anniversary. I know there are many, many more years of your great work in front of you. Give my best to Juan, and I'll see you soon, Amy. All the best to you. Thank you.
See you soon, Tavis.
Amy Goodman on Tavis Smiley. Two more great hours in front of us. Stay tuned.
KBLA 1580 Santa Monica.
I'm Mike Moore. Here's the latest from the Black Information Network. Both President Biden and Donald Trump will visit the U.S.-Mexico border in Texas this week. Biden will travel to Brownsville Thursday to meet with Border Patrol agents, law enforcement and local leaders, and call for the need to pass the Senate bipartisan border security deal. Trump will reportedly visit Eagle Pass, Texas on the same day and deliver remarks. It comes as the.